We'll get started here. I'm not gonna say a whole lot because this lady right here, a new friend of mine and a new friend of Jackson County for sure. She's with, she's part of a community accelerator grant that we got. Part of it is to do with our Jackson County creative community and she's the other leg of that. She goes around and talks to rural towns just like ours and does more listening. She's taught me a lesson this week on how to listen. And she's got tons of ideas that's been successful and unsuccessful, I guess, in other questions. So Deborah Graham with Savior Town, Savior Dock Town.
Yeah, we have them put it up there on the screen. So I'm Deb. Thank you for having me in your community. And this is so not about me, this is about you. So this is how this morning's gonna go. I'm gonna ask you what your name is, what do you do, and what do you want in your county? Dream big. Tell me big things, tell me little things. You're used to being on camera 210, so tell us who you are and what do you do?
Well, Teal Truitt. I United District State Representative, which means I represent all of Jackson, all of Lee, all of Wolf, part of Madison, part of Laurel. Also elementary principal here at McKee Elementary. And owner of Truitt Pumpkin Patch here in Jackson County. And Jackson County needs a few things, and I know we've talked about a lot of those different issues. One thing I do like that I'm seeing over the last year or so is I like the fact that, and I think we need more of this, is our county coming together as a whole, working for a common good. I think for so long we have, and it's easy in a big county like we are, you know, with very low population numbers, but a big area, you know? So it's easy to kind of have your own little pods. But I believe with our population size, if we could put all of our pods together, we could actually do a lot of good things. And I think that's probably one of the main purposes of these meetings. So I like seeing that. Obviously, I want to continue to work on those things.
So I'm gonna interrupt you. Stay with me here. First of all, I take a lot of notes. I write your name down just for my edification, because I'm gonna tabulate what everybody said, and it helps me to remember the conversation. I may quote you, because you're in a position for that to happen, but anybody else, I won't quote you unless you want to be quoted, okay? So that's a lot of really nice things you just said, county coming together for good. What does that look like? Can we, let's jump into that a little bit. For example.
Okay, for an example. I represent, like I said, those five different areas, and all five of those are different size. You know, I've got some larger counties with Madison and Laurel, and I've got some smaller ones with like Lee and Wolf. The thing I've been most impressed with some of these smaller communities is the way that, I'll use Beable as an example, I'll use Lee County as an example. Beable does a phenomenal job of promoting and selling their product. They've got a tourism director over there that is just, I mean, a rock star, and does a phenomenal job.
At a paid position?
That is a paid position, yeah. Debra Brandon-Bird, just a great individual that does a really good job. They do something every week, you know, every weekend.
And they got another one just for the town, Main Street Magister.
Yes, that's right.
So they're a Main Street community too?
Yeah. So they're smaller than we are, quite a bit smaller than we are, but they do a lot of things. And I see that same potential here in Jackson County, if we get the right pieces together and kind of, I don't know, centralize in one location or centralize in, I don't know.
So you're, let me apologize, I am gonna pick on you just a little bit because of what you do.
Sure.
You're in a position to get a lot of people to ask you about money, right?
Sure.
We need some money to do this, we need some money to do that.
I never guessed that.
Promoting Jackson County is a missing piece. It could be promoted better. How can you, in your position, help? Pay tourism director is a really great start, even if it was a part-time paid administrative position to help with that, $20,000, $22,000 a year for maybe four or five hours a day, right? If you could shake the tree to make that kind of thing happen, that'd be great. On top of that, there's no heads-on-beds tax here. Hotel motel, I'm not sure what y'all call it out here. You know that that's money that comes from outsiders, that's not money that comes from locals. How, are you for that, against that? What do you think about that?
Oh, I would definitely be for that.
So how can you make, how can you be involved to make that happen? And what do you need to make that happen?
Well, that would be, that would be meetings like this. This would be meetings with just information to the community about what this means. And then, I've said this all along, since I've got into politics a little bit, I've seen now how important our physical court and our magistrates are in an area like we live. And I think we kind of, as a community, you know, we kind of consider them guys that fix the road, or clean the ditch lines, or, you know, give me some gravel, or blacktop. But we're forgetting that they are the ones who drive our county. And we have to do a better job of getting those individuals, and they're great people, we have to do a better job of getting those people involved in these type things to where they can see the importance that they have. But...
That's what I heard this week, that it doesn't go through because it doesn't get approved to be talked about. It doesn't make it past that first guy. And that is where you could be more helpful, frankly, could help shake that tree. And I also say, you gotta show up with people at these meetings, at these kind of events to say, this is what we want.
It has to start, it has to start locally.
That grounds well, yeah.
I mean, there's, I mean, I could set, we could set all kinds of money at the state level aside, but if you don't have someone locally that's really, that's ready for it, that's ready for it, and has an idea and has a way to maintain it, then you're not gonna get it. You have to be able to sustain it, it has to be sustainable. Every project I've come to, you know, my leaders with, they're like, how are you gonna pay for it? How are you gonna sustain it? We'll build it. How are you gonna keep it afloat? Because in the past, I think they've had a lot of projects in eastern Kentucky that did not do well, because the planning part wasn't there, and the community involvement wasn't there to get that happening.
So one of the things that we do at Savior Dock Town, it's me and Becky McCray, who's the lady sitting in the picture with me, is to bring it down to smaller steps. So when we leave this gathering today, some of you will have assignments to do things. Because I believe we shouldn't just meet, we should actually do things, right? So an assignment for you would be to contact the judge and see what's holding him up. Just find out what's holding him or her up, I don't know.
Sure.
I don't know your politics well enough, but you do. So, and then maybe share that with Keith and Greg, because they're both on the ground doing things. We talked yesterday, I talked to a lot of people this week. There's a young lady named Kathy that owns an empty lot down the road here just a little bit. And at May 6, there's a big event coming through town, so Kathy is gonna make it so people can have pop-ups there. So your entrepreneurs that are still working out of their garages, or your artists that don't have a storefront, it's an opportunity for them to pop up and try their ideas out. See if they have a good idea, first of all. See if they have a market, people that are interested in it, and start tracking their numbers. Who's coming to talk to me, and how many things did I sell, that kind of thing. So in a year's time, if they're ever ready to go into a building, they've already started their financials for their business plan. That's taking a small step. I don't ever want to tell a new person that's just started a business, you need to buy a building, and you need to spend $100,000 to rehab it, and then you need to buy a whole bunch of product and hope people show up to buy. Oh, and don't forget your marketing. This is where, that's how you build sustainability, frankly, by testing that market, finding, and if it fails, you fail at a smaller step.
Sure.
You know, you learn what failed and it doesn't hurt so much. Everybody around this table, I think, are little more big thinkers, a little more active in the political side of things, and active in the community to make real changes. But I need you, from what I'm hearing on the ground, to be out in the community and be more active, and talking to the Kathys, and talking to the artists that are doing really cool things, and letting them know they have permission to do whatever they want. You know, 99% of what you want to do, you don't need permission. And I think it's a little bit more out here, because there's not as many laws out here. You tooting the horn for the county is huge. And you're an elementary principal.
Sure.
So let's talk about those kids, okay? Do you know what they want?
Well...
What do they want?
I'm in an elementary school, and right now, they want it all. You know, right now, they want, you know, to live in a mansion, and they want, you know, to ride a unicorn through town, or they want, you know, they want, they've got big dreams.
Right.
And it's, you know, and I love that about it, because they, right now, they can do anything. And that's one reason I'm really proud of our school. We've got one of the highest-performing schools in the state, right here in, you know, McKee, Kentucky. You know, one of the top 30 elementary schools in the state of Kentucky. So academically, they're there, and what's sad is right now, they have, they believe that they can do anything, and I want them to believe that, and they can. But what happens is I see them, because I also taught high school, I see, sometimes in middle and high school, reality sets in. And it's sad, because they start realizing, you know what, maybe I can't have this mansion on the hill. Maybe I can't ride this unicorn, you know, down the street, because I'm looking at mom and dad, and they're at home, you know, and grandma, and, you know, they're at home, and all my aunts and uncles are here at home. And so, you know, it kind of goes back to, you know, we've got to have something for our kids when they graduate high school, to where we want them to stay here. We want them to stay here to have something.
And I want to interject, because you're right, and I think it starts earlier than high school. I think those third graders need to be allowed to take the crosswalks, and take some pride in a little project that they've done in their community. Your shop class kids up in freshman junior years, let them build the benches and put a ton of them around town.
Sure.
Because for the next 40 years, they're gonna say, I built that. That's my work, I did that. It's those small steps to let the kids be involved in the community that's so important. Will you talk a little bit about the art contest, the mural contest you have going on? This is a great step for your kids to be involved.
Yeah, the creative community has come together inside to a mini mural contest. They've got a little mini grant there to do that. So they're going to ask all the school kids to do a mural. It'll be a four-foot by eight-foot mural, and then they'll be one selected from each school to actually get painted, you know, on a mural, and we'll ask the kids to come paint it during the summertime, during their summer break. So then we'll place those over the county, and they'll be destination spots for visitors and locals to come see, and kids to say, you know, I designed that, or I painted this section. And that's what I see with building the parks, is that 20 years later, so, you know, volunteers come say, I laid this concrete block in this concession stand, so trying to get the kids involved at a young age is very important.
And then we also, I talked about creating a free Flickr account, where all those submissions can be put online, and anybody can download them and do t-shirts and hats, or, you know, whatever they want to do. Those are just some small steps, and people in action right away. We met a young lady up in Sand Gap, in her twenties, yesterday. Had a hard life, had a really hard life. But she's an artist, and she brought out her book with all these pictures that she had drawn. Tickled pink to know that this mural contest was going on. I'm not sure how she would have heard about it. So whatever it is that you can do to help spread the words of these small things is huge. So she's gonna come to you and say, can you put these in the backpacks of all the kids at school? So that was a setup. Thank you.
Very good.
I could talk to you all day, we've got other people to talk to. Christine, we'll get you out of the way early, okay? And Shay, get ready, because you're next. I'm not gonna make you talk. So this is meant to be a conversation, so if you hear something and you want to interject, please do so. So tell me what you do.
Well, I'm Christine Duncan, and I'm CFO here at Peoples World. And my husband and I moved here about three and a half years ago.
From where?
The last place was from the Indianapolis Maryland area. We were there for 20 years.
What a difference.
Oh, yeah. But I started coming here, what, 15, 18 years ago, working with Peoples, and I fell in love with this place the first time I saw that street, and I thought, that's paradise. You know? And my husband and I love it here. And I believe in this community, I love this community. When you were talking, I was thinking about how, at our church, how they involve the youngins, they go up and sing every day in the main service, and I'm like, that's so cool, they've involved them in the service. And then the young men, they collect the offering, they've involved them in the service. And just how important that is to the community, and starting them out young, like you talk about. And my coworker's son, he has some couple little solos with the young kids and stuff. It's just, it's been really good. And they also sit in the service. Now, when I was little, I probably wouldn't behave enough to sit in the service, but they, they do.
But you know what, my preacher, what's always good for saying, bring those kids, we don't care if they cry.
Yep.
They need to be exposed to the work.
Hours and months.
So what would you like to see in this community? In this county community, your block, whatever?
Well, maybe some of the things I go to London for, a little more shopping, a little more restaurants.
So retail shopping?
Yes.
Grocery store?
Grocery store would be...
Now, I know you have the shopping saved.
But you have to come in McKee, or, you know, which, it's only 15 miles, but it's a hard 15 miles for somebody who's from a straight path, you know what I'm saying?
I know. Right around with Greg, and keep my eyes closed.
It's probably 15 miles, isn't it? 15 miles or curves out.
It's 15 miles in here.
What town are you in?
Ambel.
Ambel, okay.
Letterboxh.
Letterboxh.
I was gonna say. If my husband were here, he'd explain the whole history. That's great.
I've been teaching there and I straightened curves out.
There you go with that. So what would be some small steps? So retail, we just talked about pop-ups, that's a good example. Restaurants, so up in Sand Gap, we talked to the owners of the gas station up there, and of course, they have that building next to it, and she asked a hard question, how can we get started in really making a difference with citizens in the community that have a hard way to go of it? And my answer was, you have to start with the kids. Go out and ask them what they want. Don't guess, ask them what they want. And when they say Taco Bell, and they will say Taco Bell, I promise you, teach them how to start a Taco Bell. Invite, because they serve food, they cook food there, invite them to show, teach them how to cook, let them get their hands dirty, let them get involved, and teach them how to charge money for stuff, and how much it costs to make it, just really get involved in that process. And then to earn some money selling tacos every Tuesday, or second Tuesday of the month, or whatever it is. If they want to ride a unicorn down Main Street, teach them how to paint a damn unicorn, and let them be in a parade. Have a dog parade, and dress the kid up as a unicorn. You know, dog parades and kids, bring grandparents and parents out. Parades are fun, just enjoy it. I'm gonna skip to the next person, because I promised I wouldn't make you talk too much, and you can talk even less, Shay. Poor Shay, I'm picking on you. I'm so sorry. Tell me what you do.
I'm the treasurer of this court.
Oh, you're happy, fun, right?
Yeah.
And your boss is supposed to be your leadhold back there.
So what does the treasurer of the court do?
Everything. No, we don't. I feel like I do sometimes. We deal with the money that comes in and out.
So like for fines?
No.
No, okay.
Funding for the county.
Got it, okay.
Pay for the gravel.
The judge executive.
The asphalt.
Yeah, we pay for the gravel that people want.
Payroll.
Payroll, and all the bills that come in and out. And then a lot of the grants, like Judy's been working on a grant for the jail, we ultimately have to...
So it's not a pass-through, but it's got to go through.
It is.
The grant teams go through the county or the city, got it. Do you have a balanced budget?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to ask that when I go to a place. Do you have enough money?
No.
So that leads to the next question. What do you want to see in the county, whether it needs money or not? What's something that, and I'm saying county, because you work for the county, but it could, what town do you live in?
McKee.
In McKee, it could be just for McKee, too.
I think, I mean, you know, obviously, we need more jobs, we need more things for small children to do, or teenagers to do, I mean, the obvious things. But I think that a lot of issues that we deal with right now, not, I mean, is the community involvement, and what I mean is, it needs to go deeper than this group. I mean, you know, we have people that they don't understand what the magistrate's going through, or the judge goes through. I mean, it's easy for people outside of this area, this group, to get on social media and say, this is what needs to happen, this needs to happen, and that needs to happen. But what they don't understand is there's rules, and there's guidelines, and they want all these major things, but I'm also on Fair Board, and we have a lot of events through here. And most of the people that have these ideas on social media never attend any of these events. You know, like, we started a Christmas parade several years ago, and the majority of the people in Jackson County will go to London's parade, and yes, London's parade is amazing. It's great. But ours can never get there unless they get involved in it. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's hard.
No, I totally get it. I hear it all the time. And unfortunately, the committee of negativity is very lax.
Oh, yeah.
But they're not everybody.
They're not.
They're not everybody. So I think if you give people the opportunity to participate in the smallest way possible, it makes a difference. Don't ask me to serve on a committee, I'll tell you no. But if you reach out and text me, or call me, or email me, and say, Deb, can you come Saturday for two hours, we need some help, I'm gonna tell you yes. You have to do it with those folks, too.
You didn't.
And not in a mean way, that's the hard part.
Oh, no.
Not in a mean way. And don't hesitate to block people on social media.
Oh, I know. I've had to learn that lately, but, you know, like most of our boards that we're on, I mean, it's the same thing, it's Judy, it's very, it's you, it's you, you know, it's one of us. And it's, their main thing is, I don't have time. Well, I don't either. You know, I've got a small child, and you have to, if you love it, the community, you have to make time.
Right, and the response is, it's just an hour.
Oh, yeah, I just, I think...
Turn on the TV for an hour, come help me out.
If I could have anything here, it would be the more involvement. Yes, we need more money, yes, we need more things for kids to do, I mean, that's obvious.
The more locals come out and participate, somehow, the money finds its way in.
It does, it does, and it gives you, you know, a reason. If, you know, Timmy talked about, if we get money and we build something, how do we, how do we keep it going? And that's, you know, that's our problem. We've been handed a lot over homeless shelters, and to have a homeless shelter, you have to be able to run it, you have to have bodies to maintain it, I mean, it's just, but there's never any volunteers for that, other than a select group of people.
So that's not the thing you have to do. I know that's hard to say, I know you need some homeless filters. But I also know that one person at a time, one person at a time makes a difference. So that one person that really wants help is the person you help. You can't help everybody, and I wish, I wish we could. You feed everybody, that's a good thing, make sure people are fed. Find people when they're doing stuff, enforce the laws you already have on the book. You got an empty building filled with junk? I bet you have code that says you can't do that. And I know the health department for the state says that's dangerous, but does anybody do anything about it? It's hard to have a local, have your local sheriff be the one to come to that building owner and say, you can't do that, you have to pay $1,000 every month until you fix it, because he's afraid he's not gonna get reelected. But if you hire somebody from Louisville to come down once a month, who nobody knows, more is gonna get done, and you'll pay less, because it's a 10-year contract, you don't have to pay for insurance, I mean, it ends up being cheaper to do that kind of thing. So the way that you're attacking problems, it's a good idea to look at the way that you're doing that, and how can we make sustainability work a little bit better, like it should. The other comment Shay, I want to make is, regular people don't come to meetings like this. And if you're in City Hall, nobody's coming. If anybody's in the courthouse, nobody's coming. You've got to go to them. You've got to get out in the community. You've got to show up at the churches on Sunday morning. You've got to go to the Kiwanis meetings, where some of your leaders are, but there's a few local peoples there, too. You have to get out in the community. One person at a time. Those small steps really matter. When you're planning events, this is for you specifically, it's my secret, that's not a secret anymore. I used to be a chamber director, and we had a big statewide event coming through town that was gonna be there from noon to midnight with the state big TV channels, this is out in Iowa, and the Iowa versus Iowa state game is a big deal there, right? So they traveled to small towns all week long before the game on Saturday, and my town was one of those towns. And they said, Debbie, got a plan, 12 hours worth of activities. No way, right? There's no way one person could do that. So instead of doing, I had a few ideas of who could do what, there was gonna be a few things. We planned maybe about half of it, but the other half, we just opened it up, said, come on, let's go, we're meeting at the park on Tuesday, come tell me what you want. I'm big on asking what people want. It's probably a mistake on their part to say something. One guy said, well, we should have a chili cook-off. And I responded, you know, that's a great idea, you're in charge of that. Here's your location. And it was a old retirement, and he goes, I don't know how to do that. I'm like, well, who do you go chili with? Well, I know three guys. I'm like, there you go.
Got your committee.
Work together. And it happened. We had a human foosball... We had a human foosball game that a local youth group, y'all know what foosball is, right? They took PVC pipes with handles on them, and bales a hay on the side, and a ball on the ground. So you stood at your location and kicked. It was hysterical. And the local insurance agent was the sponsor and paid for the insurance for that event. That was his form of sponsorship. He couldn't have bought better advertising because everybody was over there, including the TV station playing you a foosball. I wouldn't have thought of that idea, ever. So everybody showed up with ideas. And the minute you let people participate and be in charge of their part of it, they're coming, their families are coming, and their friends are coming. And you'll have a good time. Just saying. Don't plan it all. Open it up. For anybody in the room that does planning. Open it up and make people accountable. I'm kind of bossy, so it's not hard for me. Don't do the work yourself. Shay? Thank you. Ms. Sizmore.
I'm not ready to read.
Tell me what you do.
My name is Ruthie Sizmore. I am actually retired. I was the director of a family resource center for 28 years. Let's put out this disclaimer before everyone, it says, I'm not originally from here, but I've been here for 33 years.
So you're a come here, not a from here?
I am a come here, but I, you know, people have taken care of me down here. That's what I want to say. I've felt part of the community since I came. I came as a volunteer through my church up in Boston, and the community just took...
Yes, yes.
All right, so, yeah, I'm gonna get that off. Everyone knows right now. But I married a good country boy, sweet as pie, and loved it here. And I will be here until I die. My kids will be here, my grandkids, so I love this community.
So, wait a minute. You don't work full-time anymore? Do you know where I'm going with this? So what are you gonna see in the community? Let's start there.
Well, I just wanted to comment what Timmy said, Mr. Tripp, sorry. Mr. Tripp, Timmy. I absolutely believe in bringing the whole county together for projects. But I also know that each little area of our county has separate unique communities. And I personally, which I do a lot of community work now, and I'm in the southern end of the county, I own an Anvil. So I feel like, you know, I need to work on my own hometown area and not tell Sangap people how to do there, you know? But I'll, but I'll, I can come and join them for an activity. Of course, you go back to McKee is the county seat. So rarely when we have what we say, county activities, it usually happens in McKee.
Well, change that. Change that. Start doing more activities in smaller towns, too. Doesn't have to be big activities, but start doing what you can. Because this meeting is great to do in here because we are filming, but there's no reason you can't gather an Anvil.
Okay, so let me get to one thing. When you talk about a small group can do something. For years, even before I came, they had a little parade in Anvil. Small parade. And it was, you know, a lot of floats and family and churches. And then it sort of took a hiatus for maybe, I don't know, 15 years? Well, we started it just a small, and it's a committee, an official committee. We have minutes and everything. Three people are on the committee, so not big at all.
Three committees, but God bless you. Three people is perfect.
And, you know, we just had to because we had to make it official. But really, you know, a lot of it was through text messages and, you know, we had a few official meetings, but really it was all done through...
Perfect.
Yeah. So what happened was, it's small, but last year, we had over 400 people. We had, we started with the little bikes, kids on scooters, kids in wagons, a tractor. Now we have floats, we have, we have vendors. We probably had 25 vendors last year. They all could set up on campus, on campus of Anvil, let's do it, for free. We didn't charge anything. So the problem we had last year, because we had a small committee of three people, and by the time the parade comes around, I'm one of, and so are the other two. So we had no one to do parking. So literally, it was crowd control. I kept, I literally was running around saying, you can't park there, you can't park there. But we did have people to step up and say, it was, it was pretty bad. And so, and what happened was, we had some young, young adults saying, can we help you next year and help you with parking? And parades set up? Because the parade's only literally, it's not even a half a mile. It's real small. People walk in, you know, healthy people walk in. But you can't be in two places at once. So in our, in our fight department's fantastic. We have a Palm Creek Fight Department. They always help with tripping, blocking the roads. So, yeah, so it's a good thing, even though I saw it as, oh my goodness, I need more help with...
So you said yes to those young people that want to help with crowd control?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. It's just a good thing. I don't have any negative comments you used to say about it at all. Bravo to you.
Well, no, no, no.
Now, what do you want?
Oh, what do I want?
What do you want? Bravo to the community.
I was gonna say, and again, we...
More for his base?
A lot of times, people don't know how to help. And so by suggesting how they can help, I mean, I've witnessed that in my life, that...
This is what's really great about social media, use correctly. Shout out to say, you know, I need two people for two hours on Saturday who can help. And you take the first two people that say yes.
Totally. And we want more.
And no matter their income, their education, their intelligence, their race, whatever, let people help who want to help.
Totally. And that's sort of exciting how it's so small. We have no funding. We had no, until last year. We didn't need it.
That's for a second. What do you need funding for?
We didn't.
They need promotion.
Right. And that, we just use social media, Facebook. We really, that's the area so need, wants, wants, needs.
Yeah, so tell me what you want. That's what I want to know.
And again, again, I'm speaking, and I, and I know, you know, I absolutely love all the things in county. I feel overwhelmed if you say, you know, let's do this activity. Like Sangap just had the first annual Jackson County Walk for Autism. Fantastic. And I think it was started by the folks at Sangap. There you go. So what's wrong with that?
Nothing.
It started. So should I say, oh, we, we should have had that in Anvil? No. All power to Sangap. They have a fantastic community. You know, I love Sangap, the people up there, and wants.
So, so one thing I can suggest about doing activities at the same time every Sat, you know, like, so I can look on, see what's coming up, and I can be at the Methodist district at one, I can be in a parade at one, I can be somewhere else at one. It's maddening to have to try to choose. So the simple thing is to just change your hours. Try to make it a little different. Well, we can do that at 10. If they're gonna do that at one, because they're serving food, so they, they have to feed people. But we're just having a little fundraiser for something. We can change that. So do your best to work together throughout the county, without having to be on top of each other. I get it. You work where you're at, but how can the community connect together? You have some fantastic resources here, some natural, environment, recreational resources. That's where you can come together. So we're gonna do a walk up here on the north end of the county at 8:00 AM. Well, you know, they can be down here by 11:00. So do something at 11:00 to piggyback on it and work together, both of you promoting. And now your outreach is doubled.
I can see a lot of different activities that the whole county can do. But I also see that there is so many community members in all different areas. McKee, I mean, huge, the fair, they're all volunteers, correct? Work like dogs during the fair. It's huge now. It's fantastic. But I know, I saw them, you know, running around like crazy people. I know they were worn out. I know it had to, because it was the biggest fair that we had in a long time.
People ready, were ready to be out one day.
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot of work.
It is. It's a lot of work.
So there are, this community volunteer is a resource. Again, the wants, my wants, support for small businesses.
What does that look like?
Bringing them together.
Did you what?
Maybe give them some training in business plans, like you said. You know, don't go buy that building and buy that inventory and not. We have accounted, there's 18 small businesses in, from $1 store to Opals. It's from $100 store to Opals. There's 18 businesses. That doesn't include the medical clinic. So there's 18 of them. I'm gonna go out on a, on a limb here and say, 18 of them had no support from any small, unless it was the Industrial Development Authority maybe helping get a loan. I don't know that information. But I...
They're here, they're here. They can talk later.
They are, okay. I'd, I'd like to know, out of those 18, who, I think pretty much all of them started on their own, probably didn't have a business plan, just did it. We just have a new food truck in Tyre called Pinoy Kitchen. Everyone loves it. It's great. But you know how hard, that she had such a hard time to open up? You know, she, you know, had to get...
She doesn't drive. I hear she doesn't drive, so she's gotta wait for her husband to get up work.
Absolutely.
There's just one thing.
But she's amazing. And so, social media's got the word out and people, it's a little bit hard to get to, but, you know, we still do it. So, support for all the small businesses, whether it be even a, a website, a social media. I mean, I hate to always go back to Facebook, but...
So, so let's go, let's talk about partnerships. Not a formal downtown association, but a loosely organized partnership amongst the businesses.
Absolutely.
So if you're gonna, maybe you want to do shop local promotion.
Right.
What if everybody came together and made an event around that?
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, you throw your five bucks in, you throw your 10, you throw your five, and now you've got some funding to do, to spend a little bit on promotion and buy an ad in the newspaper, or go on a local radio, you know? How can you come together without fighting? And then stay open later. But that's just a personal pet peeve of mine. Sorry. Small businesses, the world has changed. The world has changed a lot. The competition is online, the competition is Walmart and Big Box Stores. So if you're not, if you haven't figured out how to be online more, how to use the market that's available to you. I had a conversation with an artist yesterday, and we talked about setting up an Etsy account so that she could sell her work not only in her store, but she's a fabulous artist. She could have an Etsy account and be selling it that way. So that's what I mean by online. How can you use the tools that are there? And these tools are not like, like they used to be. You used to have to have a budget, say, I'm gonna spend $200 every month with the paper and $100 with the radio, and I'm done with promotion. Now you have to spend time. It don't cost as much, but you do have to budget in the time. So partnerships, and it can start with just two businesses. It doesn't have to be all 18. It can be two.
So who would bring them together? Who is that person?
Who's got a business in here? A retail business downtown? Nobody. Haha, Rita.
Yes.
You do have a business, though. You have a B&amp;B.
Yes.
The only B&amp;B in the county.
The only, yes.
There's lots of lodging. They have the B&amp;B. I've learned that lesson this week. Would you reach out to one of the businesses in town and talk a little bit about cross-promotion with them?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so there, there's one step.
Well, and I'll give you, and I'm speaking from experience. My daughter owns a dance studio in Anvil. Had no, she had the training and the background in dance, nothing about a business owner. She...
SBDC, Small Business Development Center, is funded with your tax dollars and costs nothing to bring them in for some of these trainings that you're talking about.
And Judy did. Judy got worn through Valerie Henderson Training in QuickBooks. So my daughter did do that, and it was a big help for that. But I'm curious to see, out of all the businesses, I think they, because they all started them themselves, they probably have the expertise, you know?
I'm sure, that's where you share what you have. Somebody knows how to do QuickBooks, you're right. Somebody knows how to post on Facebook. Somebody knows how to start a landing page or a website. How can you share the skills that you have? And it's, it's the small steps. It's two people talking to each other. And then talking about it. We hate to talk about ourselves. That's, that's, that's rural human nature. We are raised not to toot our own horn and not to talk about ourselves.
Promote.
Yeah. So we have to get past that. You don't have to toot your own horn, but you want to build your community, and that's how you do it.
One will want.
Go ahead. See, she didn't want to talk at all.
She's not willing to hold on.
I'm sorry. One will want. It's gonna be a touchy one, I'm gonna bring it up. What else are probably in the room? We have a lot of businesses. We have Airbnbs. We have...
Sorry, they've been drilling that into me. I'm the lodging.
They're all Airbnb's.
Oh, Airbnb, sorry. Why don't you say air?
You can say air.
I've learned that this week, too.
And so you have, again, all these community members that are working so hard. There are ordinances on the books that are, I don't know enough about it, and I need to learn more about it. Are they not being enforced? And I'm talking mostly about trash ordinance, cleanliness, and that's a huge topic, and doing a great job in local pickup. But I don't know if we're focused as much on maybe vacant, abandoned housings, private property. These are all big issues, you know, that needs to be addressed. Everyone has different opinions.
So that it's attractive.
Attractive, especially the...
Safe.
Especially the main roads coming in, 21...
Lot of isolers out there.
Lot of isolers. But, of course, there's different opinions, even at this table. I'm sure there's...
So here's a quick solution. I've been thinking about this all week. I talk about this all the time. Empty buildings, trash, that kind of thing. Don't ask people to remove their trash that are not going to ever do it. They're gonna be pissed off because you asked them. How dare you tell me what to do with my property? We know who they are. Put fences up and decorate the fences. It's better than driving by and looking at trash. You can put a chain link fence on. Now, stay with me.
Sorry, my face.
I know. Your face is giving you away. And I'll share in my review, I'll share some communities that have used chain link fences to make them look beautiful. There's a lot you can do to make a chain link fence look good. And it involves an art, and it involves your students, and it involves lots of things. It's a temporary solution for a permanent problem. And tell those folks feel accepted as part of the community, truly accepted, they're gonna battle you till they come home. It's a prideful thing. It's a, how dare you thing. It's a, this is all I have, and now you want to take it away, kind of thing. I mean, there's lots of reasons for it.
Most of the time, you're not gonna change people's behavior.
No, no.
So you have to change the environment more, that's why I think you're...
So is it a good solution? Maybe not, but it's a start, it's, it's temporary.
You had a great suggestion the other day, to find the property that needs help, right? Uh, that has an owner that's from out of town. So talk about that if you would.
So, I like out of town owners, 'cause I think you can clean it up and they'll never know. I think you can wash the windows of that building, I think you can put artwork on the windows without asking permission. 'Cause if you clean it up, what are they gonna do? Tell you to make it dirty again? No. There are those little things, you can have groups of ninjas, people, that just come out and get together and do stuff. You see trash on the sidewalk, pick it up, throw it away, I don't care whose it is, those little steps.
See weeds going up through the stuff, well, cut it there.
Just take your foot and drop the bean, it goes away. You don't have to bend over to pull it, you should take your foot and go like that, yeah. Tell me why you're frustrated, 'cause she's got that look, I know that boss that look.
Well, you mentioned a while ago, though, bringing someone in from Louisville to prosecute or to help in those, is that not something that would be possibly...
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I asked you about budget and funding, if you're going to, that's a good use of resources, good use of money to fund someone to enforce the codes already on the book, because there's not gonna be anybody local that wants to do it. The local sheriff is gonna say, alright, fine, you can have another month, because y'all live together. Of course they're gonna say that, but you bring in the bad guy from out of town, and they're here for a day, do their business, and they come back in two weeks, done, and then follow through on the fines. You may never collect the money, but there's a protocol that's set or could be set on what happens.
I will say this, we have, in the last several years, we have a, our officers do trash control, which means if your house has, now I'm not talking about an old car, because they still have to follow laws, so, like, household trash laying around outside, when they go, they go. 'Cause they write them up, they give them a citation, and then it's the same process of everything else they deal with. It goes to court, it's not left up to our law enforcement, how long you have to clean it up. They all write the ticket, it's just like when they put somebody in jail.
Just give the ticket, it's not...
Yes, so you go to court and the judge says, you know what, this really ain't a big deal right now, so...
Jails are overcrowded.
The jails are overcrowded, we don't pay for anybody else in there, so we'll give you thirty more days, okay? So these officers are spending their time, they have to go back into court again for hours of a day, and then they say...
And these judges elected?
Yes, and they'll say, you know, I want twenty-five dollar fine, you pay twenty-five dollars, you show us in sixty more days that you took your trash off, okay, well then they'll do that. They'll pay the twenty-five dollars, they'll go take the trash to the dump, and then in a month, it's the same thing.
So where's the, where's the education process? I understand what you're saying, you gotta follow laws, you gotta, your hands are tied, I get all of that, and they wait till the last possible moment to do stuff, and then they just let it build up in another six months or five before they have to do anything.
It never ends.
Where's the process in between cleaning up and sick being of six months? How can we get involved in that timeframe about a little bit of education and community pride and getting them involved in community activities?
I know we used to, they would go, like, they had a pride group that would go in the schools.
Did we hear about that?
Yeah, I heard, yeah. And they would, you know, and the kids was all for it. You know, if you can get to a kid and tell them, don't clear, don't do this, they will scold you for it. But I don't know, and I'm not meaning this mean in any way, but I don't know how you get to some of these adults to... I mean, if, if they don't have enough pride in themselves, then they'll pay the twenty-five dollars every six months, a twenty-five dollar fine.
And it might not even be a matter of pride, does anybody talk to these people, like, we're talking right now? Or over a beer, or over a cup of coffee?
Let me jump in here.
Yes, please.
Ruthie's got on, on the subject that is, uh, that is top, top chef of, of my problem. In fact, about it, if you'd ever got around to me, this was gonna be my number one want.
Tell me your name again.
Rodney Crisp.
Rodney. Go ahead, sorry.
But, uh, the cleaning up, these, these, um, and I, I'll go ahead and say it's junk cars, and it's, and it's junk in general, and it is primarily abandoned buildings. Most of these, I don't, I won't say most, but a good number of these places that we're, that we're talking about are abandoned.
So there's no people living in them?
That's what I mean, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, are abandoned by the owners that used to own them, that's all I meant.
I don't even know, I don't know if anybody knows who owns them or not. They may be out of towners, but, but, but I'm, I do know this, we, we have a, we have an ordinance, which is a close kin to a law, as far as I'm concerned. We have an ordinance on, on illegal dumps, okay?
Okay.
Many of these properties that we're talking about are illegal dumps. I mean, you can, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump back in time. When I was in high school, which was sometime back in the dark ages.
With me, I understand.
When I was in high school, we had, you could talk about a, you could talk about a, a, a place that needs cleaning up, okay? And, and practically, everybody knows what you're talking about, 'cause there's only one or maybe two of them from one end to the other end of the county, on the main road.
Right.
Okay, today, I can take you five mile in any direction and show you fifty of these places. It's a, we've, we've, it's a change in culture is what it is. That's not good, it's, it's went, it's went south rather than, than the other direction. But I've had this thought process for years, and, and I'm wondering how you can... First of all, I refer to a lot of these places as, as being illegal dumps, and you can define them that way, because, I mean, they're just, it's just trash, and it's abandoned property. But I've, I've wondered if there is a possibility of changing the tax structure in some form and saying, that piece of property has got a higher tax on it.
Yeah, instead of charging tax for people for cleaning up their property, charge it for keeping them dirty.
Yeah, and we, and we've talked about fines, it's a, it's a, it's a kind of a fine, but the tax ends up being, if, if I'm, if I'm paying fifty dollars on my place and, and there's, and there's one of these places next door to me, then charge, charge that person a hundred dollars, un- until such time that he brings his, his property up to par. Now here again, you're gonna have to, it be, it, it's difficult to say what's up to par, you know? When does a car become junk, you know? But, uh, when does a, when does so many old washing machines on the front porch become an illegal dump for washing machines, you know? Somebody's got to determine that, and, and that's, and that's where the, that's where the real hard line, because, you know, what's, what, what is somebody else's junk is not somebody else's junk, you know? But you, but you got to determine that.
Yeah.
But, uh, but there, there has to be a, there has to be a starting point. And, and so far, in my opinion, we have never started working on this property. It's one of those things that most people ignore, or they bury their head in the sand hoping it'll go away.
Or you don't even see it after a while. You know, you drive the same route to work every day, and you just go right past it, you're listening to the radio or the podcast, you don't really see it anymore. I'm a newcomer, and of course I see it, 'cause it's obvious, but it's not, there are a lot of people that do not see it.
And, uh, and Shay was talking about this, this, this pride group, now this was something, and, and we all know where, where pride began, but, but I was told that, that the biggest pre, biggest reason that pride went, went away is because it lost its funding. Well, that's when a bunch of people should've jumped in, and, and, and you do it without any funding. I mean, having pride in your community is not something you can fund. It's something that you, that you instill into your, into your youth, and, and, and of course, at that time, we took pride to the schools heavily. We, and we, and we funded, uh, projects, you know, artwork, and, and we, we even funded so much a bag for, for garbage that you would go out and pick up.
We still did that.
We still do that?
Do you really?
Yes, we do. Again, it's the same volunteers every year.
But, but, but the, one of the, I'm, I'm gonna say, one of the, one of the flaws, and I'm, since I'm not with the school system, I can say this, but a, a flaw with the school system is that we have, we have ceased teaching community in the school system. And, and you definitely start in the second, third grades. And, and, and then by the eighth grade, or maybe when they get to be freshmen in high school, you'll have a little of it stick. It won't all stick, because a whole bunch of teenagers just aren't real smart.
What if you and Shay or your boss meet with Tim, the elementary principal, and figure out a simple, a simple schedule on how to come in and talk to first second, third graders?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I tell you, I'm not sure if he was there then. When they were going in the schools, the, I think the extension office had someone hired. It was like a, they call it...
Pride board major, something like that?
Something that, that's what they done, they went into the schools and done that. We still have, we still have pride, we still have, that's who pays those officers to go out, that's who does the, the countywide pickup, you volunteer one part of the year, and you pick up so many bags, and then in a couple months, you do it again, and they pay you so much per bag. So that, some of that money is still out there. I think the funding left, maybe, I think they quit hiring the person that done that, like, that was their job, that's what they, they done. They went into the schools, they done demonstrations, they done different activities like that. That part didn't come through our office, yeah. The part that come through us was, I mean, there's still money there for the road pickups. Our inmates pick up most of the roads now. Um, and even back to the illegal dumps, um, when someone calls about an illegal dump, then the officers will go out, that, they go through the trash, they look for, you know, 'cause sometimes people forget and throw their, their bills away in it. But, um, with that, um, the inmates will go out and clean those dump sites up. But all those, those dump sites run through the state, and unfortunately, it has to be, it has to follow so many guidelines to be considered a dump site, like an actual, through the state dump site. Now, is that, that's bad, I mean, it is, but as far as, for the money, the funding there, it has to be considered an, an illegal dump, which, um, but there is still money out there for the roadside pickup, but it's, it's like everything else, you'll have five or six groups that do it.
And you're, you're with the paper, right?
Yes.
Can you write an article about the money that's available and what you have to do to get it?
Sure.
It should be coming up in April, right? Probably during April or...
Well, we're here, yeah.
That's right, the third one.
You can write an article about anything, Kate, so.
I'll do, I'm just like, I don't have...
But you know, there's the name of the church.
The extension office part of it, or that, I don't have any idea about that part of it.
He can make that happen.
Right, but we do.
I'm hoping.
In terms of like getting the things done that everybody here is talking about, like, the laws that we have just don't support that, we have ordinances. There is no way for us to hire somebody to come from Louisville to write tickets because we don't have codes. We have ordinances, so you have to get somebody to enforce codes, you have to have code enforcement, and the city and the county, neither one have code enforcement.
But you can enforce ordinances.
You can, but it's, it's literally just trash, like, you, those ordinances don't include junk, junk car.
So they're not including empty buildings, well, add an ordinance, just like the old ones are written, they can be unwritten and new ones written.
And that's true, but those still go through...
Franch.
Franch and the court, and there's only so many of those things you can enforce, and if your judges in court aren't gonna...
So here's the thing, um, I get it, I get it, there's so much red tape. Choose one thing, start with what's the most important to you? Is it the empty buildings, or is it the illegal dumps, or is it, um, whatever, right? Which one would be easiest to attack? And which one can the community get involved and help with? The people, offering people money to pick up trash? Oh my God!
But people still won't do that.
Well, they don't know about it.
Yes, they do.
They do, it's, most of the churches do it.
This has went on, like, we've had this problem this, for, ever since I can remember.
The whole time I've been on.
There has been times that we don't have enough volunteers, so as a fiscal court, we went out and volunteered, and didn't, I mean, we didn't get any of the money, so it's, it's just there. People know it.
Wouldn't it be great, instead of those twenty-five dollar fines?
I wouldn't.
They would have to...
It would be.
Pick up the trash.
But that's...
And those are only, that only works in public spaces, right? You can't go into some, onto somebody's property and pick up their trash.
Like we can't do, like, yeah, and that's those people that are mad anyway because you've tried to tell them what to do. If you went onto their property and said, you're all, I'm gonna build this fence here, oh, well, they would, they'd kill you.
Well, you can't build that fence on their property. You have to do, and, and, and I, I kinda liked your idea, and I, and when you was talking about it, I'm thinking, where'd you build that fence at?
I mean, really?
But, but you have to build it on the state highway right of way.
But you would have to give them the right of way, because then once you could listen, we've been through it. If you wreck and hit that fence, that's gonna fall back on somebody, like, you know, like if I don't build a fence...
It's better to hit that fence than it is to hit three washing machines.
Well, I mean, in general it is, but if, if, if the county goes and builds a fence...
Yes, yes.
Uh, I, I think, I, I think there's, there's an actual value on your community. You know, and just recently, we had somebody complain about the fact that they sold the house at less than what the market value was because of their neighbors. Okay, so there's, and there's a value, there's, there's numbers out there that associate tourism dollars as a value when you have a community that, that becomes cleaner, you know? So, so there's an education level there, you know, uh, okay, Sanford and Son loves their garbage pile, right? And some of those people don't understand that they are actually influencing the value of their community. So it's the, it's that point that we've got to bring across, so how do you do that? How do you go up and say, you have a trashy piece of property and you're hurting value, and they don't even understand what that value means? So how, how do we bring that out as a community? Maybe start, find somebody that it will be conducive to cleaning up their property that everybody sees. Let's all get together and clean that one up, and then everybody sees that, so is that a...
Do you think that depression...
Oh, yeah, there's mental health issues, right, all kinds of stuff.
That goes behind this.
I was in, um, a small town, Clontore, Minnesota, five hundred people, something like that. They have an old man there, he's a order, he's a equipment order. He had every possible piece of outdoor equipment that you could think of, that just filled up his whole area. And some of it was actually pretty valuable. So I just made a suggestion, what if you made an outdoor museum out of this equipment, just organize it a little bit? And that guy was all over it, thought that would be great, I don't have to get rid of everything. He'd have to get rid of some of it, but he could keep most of it, and it's a beautiful outdoor museum. There are people that wanna come see that. You know, you've got a junker on the road here, um, that smashes cars and stuff, you don't know which place I'm talking about. Pretty neat about it, it's, I've seen lots worse looking, and it's kinda organized. I'm thinking that might be a person that would be interested in a fence, that might be open to doing a partial fence there. Go to Nebraska, uh, western Nebraska, out in the middle of nowhere, somebody took a bunch of old cars and put a nose down and made it look like Stonehenge, how the rocks are set up like Stonehenge. People travel from all over here to come to go visit, and there's nothing there but that, and a little pop-up food truck.
If we could find somebody that's got, you know, there's plenty of them that, they love their cars, and they take parts off of it, and they wind up, but you said, what's the, at what point do you, do you call it a problem? You know, my, my thought was, uh, Cordell High, the brass girls are around it. But, you know, if you, if we could find somebody that's got, and there's plenty of them that's got old junk cars laying around, and I had a thought of, let, let's get the vocational school to do a, take those old car parts, and let's make a big transformer sculpture, everybody's gonna come take a picture of it. So then they're involved by donating and we're cleaning their property at the same time.
Well, we had a real good conversation going here, and I jumped in and messed it up.
Not really, no.
But, I, that's, that is a major problem in, in, in our, in our county, and as I tried to demonstrate with that... And as I tried to demonstrate with that example, you know, forty years ago, we just had one or two of these places. And now we've got fifty-seven of them, you know?
It, it's not gonna be resolved in this meeting, that's for sure.
Uh, but, but, but the things that was going on here before Ruthie and I, uh, brought, brought this trash thing to, to the table is, is good.
It's a good conversation and I want to be able to-
Were you and Ruthie went negative on? Well, uh, it was just a matter of time till I was trying to go negative, but I was surprised it hurt. She was a positive person.
I am, I am.
Well, a lot of time we got, but we probably oughta move on.
Uh, yep, I wanna get a couple more people. I promised you ladies that we'd talk. So tell me who you are.
I'm Jody Gabbard. I work here at PRTC.
Jody, what do you want?
More opportunities for my son.
Can you talk a little bit louder?
More opportunities for my son. Oh, excuse me.
How old?
He's eight.
Okay.
And, um, he's got, uh, big dreams. And, um, for him to do some of the things that he wants to do, I have to travel out of the county.
Like what? Give me one example.
Well, he does, uh, travel baseball. He's, uh, did, uh, flag football in London, which wasn't offered for his age group here. He's played soccer in London.
Ooh, soccer. There's your soccer guys.
And I've often wondered why we don't offer soccer here. We have plenty of-
Cause no adult knows how to teach it.
Okay.
Really? That's what I've heard.
But just things like that, you know, he's an only child and he longs to play with others. And just having a networking, um, here, other than summer baseball. Just have a place where, you know, boys can be little boys and get together and do something fun year round instead of just summer. Um, things like that for my son.
Yep, got it. And we've been talking about involving kids more too.
One of the things I'd like to say about the trash, um, I, I wait on all these people that come in and they're good people. Some of them, it's a matter of transportation. Some of them are elderly and maybe they're, they're, they're taking care of grandchildren, their kids are on drugs. And they don't have an opportunity to load it up in the truck and take it. So maybe if there was a friends group or something that you could, that you could say, if you need help, call us and we'll help you, you know? Because some of them don't have the resources.
Exactly. That's where you start for the people that, that are willing to let you help.
Okay.
So Rodney, do you have a pickup?
Uh, yep, I live here, Donna. Would you put trash in? That's the best question, right?
Sorry, I said the wrong way.
There's two nice ones out here. I don't dig trash.
Do you have access to an old pickup?
Yeah, I, I could arrange, I could arrange that.
The thing is, if you could get a group that would maybe donate a trailer inside, we'll park a trailer at your property for a week. You load it up, we'll send somebody to grab that, you know, nobody has to charge you.
Don't your garbage company have roll-offs?
I don't think so.
Uh, no.
We do have roll-off.
We, we, they, they, they come in from out of the county.
No, we also have roll-offs. They're not dumpsters free personally, but there's roll-offs up there. But they have to pay for them because we have to pay for the trash.
So what if you figure out that's where you can invest some money in getting a roll-off, using a roll-off for two weeks every month? That goes to three different places or something, you know?
But like the county can't pay for that.
No, 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 grants, that kind of thing, private donations.
Now, all that could, now there are only like three of them, three or four of them.
Yeah, but that's better than none.
Right, um, votes are used, but now the other, there's other, the waste management does have dumpsters. But you have to pay for those monthly. But the roll-offs that we have, cause we have one, we break it down to the fair of the year and it sits over there. But, um, there, there is, those are available, but nobody ever wants to pay for that. And that's, that's another, you know, they don't-
So this is a community pride project. This is something that people can put together and, and make happen. This is something that could come out of this group.
What's the problem with it?
Um, I feel like that to, to get it on your property, you have to pay a deposit. And the deposit is high. Seems like it's three hundred eighty-five. But you get back whatever you buy it.
Your rent years working?
You know, if you own it.
Yeah, I know they are.
Well, it's the way the garbage, you pay for the garbage you start to leave.
Yes.
So this is, this is a great opportunity for private donations for-
Yeah, I don't think many people even knew the county had those probably.
So, can you kinda lead that effort a little bit, work with some folks? Can you find somebody to do that? Can you show up with your pickup?
I, I can definitely be on the committee, but no, I won't leave. Nobody wants me to leave. You only lead about five organizations, you don't, you can't lead one more?
Sir, what is your name under there? Who are you?
Sammy Creach. I'm the manager of Jackson County.
Would you help him? Not lead it, neither one of you, but would you help him?
No. Honestly, all your lines are full.
See, this is what we run into. It's okay. Not a full-time committee thing. If he has a question or somebody else on that group has a question that you can answer, would you help?
Will you.
Okay. Don't worry. We'll figure something out. We're not gonna solve this today. But there's a couple of answers right there to get started and thank you because you're absolutely right and I didn't even think about that. So, all right, we gotta go to some, what is your name here?
My name's LaBriska Smith and I work at, uh, Eagle's Road Telephone.
What is your first name?
LaBriska.
Okay. I just didn't hear you.
Yeah.
What do you want?
Well, I probably just reiterate what's already been said, you know, more job opportunities, more stores. And I have two little ones, a seven-year-old and a six-month-old. And I'd like for them to be, you know, excited about the county. You know, there's so much negative connotation in our county sometimes. And all the youth are wanting to leave to make their impact. I'd like them to be excited to stay. You know, like, you know, if they wanna go on to college, then where can come back and make their impact here? I'd really like for them to be passionate and excited about that, cause I love this community. And I want them to share that same passion, excitement for the community.
Amen.
Keep being a positive influence for your kids. Thank you. That makes a big deal. Sir, what's your name? Oh, you got something else? That's it? Okay.
I'm Tal Jones and I'm with a regional nonprofit called The Focus Group.
What do you do?
It operates in five counties. We concentrate on economic development, workforce development, and community development. And not necessarily in that order. Community development's what we're discussing here today. I've sat in meetings like this all across fourteen counties. There are a lot of solutions in place to many, a great many of the things that you all have discussed here today. There are things I've seen in other communities that are doing as well. There are things that are available here right now. Uh, Jeff Henderson had a bunch of debris in back of his pickup truck, uh, when was that Rodney? Tuesday. And I said, what are you doing? Helping a lady from church move some slabs and stuff out of her yard that she needed. Now, we're not getting our message out there. With regard to the small business group-
What's your name?
Uh, Jerry Smart.
Jerry Smart. Do you know Tal?
Yes, ma'am.
Tal or Tal?
Tal, T-A-L.
Okay.
With regard to the small business groups, there are several organizations that can cover them up with more information, more support, more opportunities than they ever imagined.
Tal can help you too. That's his job.
In addition to the KSPDC, uh, those organizations that I used to be involved, directed with Small Business Support. Those, they are making every effort to engage and find and locate those people. Um, through online tutorials, ebooks, things like that. But if I give a list of them, I can cover them up with contacts, people in a large-
Here's what I know about small towns. You gotta walk in the door of the store and shake their hand.
Yeah.
And talk to them and ask them what they want and then help them that way.
Yeah.
So I know there's lots of organizations, God bless them, because those things are all important. But the, the connections are missing and, and-
The Innovation Cabinet has an excellent program. We'll go over that. Unfortunately, they've got three people that service fifty-four counties around here. So they are spending all their time working with the people who have reached out.
So where's your, what's your website?
I'll, I'll give you my, it's KentuckyFocus.com and I'll be glad to give you my card.
Um.
But I'll be glad to go visit those people and, and I already got it on my checklist. I asked for the list of eighteen businesses.
Okay.
You follow me back to Amble, I will get up-
I talked to you on the phone before.
I've been wanting to get trained to have the GoDaddy website development. And there's fantastic information for small businesses. I think as a person, as a, uh, from personal experience, most business owners, a lot of times don't have the time to do that, unfortunately.
I think it could be a big help too for your, your teachers and students and that kind of-
You know, I think a lot of people, Tal knew this job was just created six months ago. He's new at it. But he's very experienced in this kind of work. He lives in Corbin, but he's worked at five different counties, but his office is in Jackson County. And he's already done a lot for Jackson County. We need to utilize him. I'm, I'm not trying to put you more work on you, Tal, but I know you already do a lot.
Yes, he is, and that's what you're supposed to do.
I, I see, I see a lot of the same faces at all these meetings. Uh, I told somebody the other day, I said, this is the second meeting in the last three years I've been to Jackson County. Keith Gabber wasn't in, but he was out of town with another guy. And, you know, I see, there's a lot of, I do not live here. I do not vote here. But I love this community. And it's, it's for people like Judy and Keith and, and even Rodney over there, my buddy. I appreciate him as well. Uh, you know, there's a lot of willing people here. There's a lot of good sides to this community. And a lot of these things are contagious, you know? If we start cleaning up one area, the neighbors will do it. And that's always been my motto. Sure, you know, if a county's not willing to work and be progressive in pursuit of getting better, fix their neighboring county, make them jealous. Have those small town charities, neighboring counties right now.
All right, Tal, um, I'm glad you're here and I see you taking a bunch of notes. So you have your work cut out for you.
One more thing, I was in London and I stopped at Freechee's. And I was standing there and there is a, a thing there with pamphlets about all the surrounding counties. There was not one thing there about Jackson County. I mean, all of them. And I was looking and I thought, I have one thing.
You have a tourism director in the room, but he's not there.
My sister-in-law is, uh, she does something with Tyler School and you'll have to forgive me, but they do the STLP. They created a flyer and I did bring that up to her and she took some of the little kids flyers up to Freechee's and left them. But that would be a good idea to have something official there, uh, cause we got some real pretty things to offer. And, you know, just get them to come over. This is one county over.
Yeah, we're going to, uh, do some remapping on the website. And Tal's gonna help with that, but, uh, that's part of that is those kids, those STLP. And we even mentioned, uh, for next year, maybe getting the whole school system. Maybe, uh, segment that out and have, you know, the way I understand it, each school has an opportunity to choose their own STLP project. If we could, as a community, uh, give options to all these schools and have them pick which one they want, you know, for a common goal. So that's something I've been working with Ashley Young.
And maybe even sell, sell ad space. PRTC had a billboard forever and one, you know, advertising how close we were to the interstate with our Geek Rock Band. You know, we'd be probably, I'm sure Keith would be willing to buy ad in that to help, you know, print costs or whatever. And, uh, just-
She's our marketing director.
It's all good. We do a little marketing and we're happy to do it. It's important. And we, you know, we think we've got a pretty good story to do here at PRTC.
You do. Um, some of you in the room I've already talked to, so that's why I'm not talking to you again. Um, but I haven't talked to you. What is your name?
Uh, I'm Katie Gabber.
You notice there's a lot of Gabbers in here.
I know, so that's, that's familiar. Are you related to somebody in the room?
No. I'm married to Gabber, who's not from here.
What would you like to, what do you do?
I'm with the Jackson County McKee Industrial Development Authority.
Okay. Um, what, what would you like to see in the community?
Um, well, I can relate with LaBriska, what she said. Uh, I have two young children. Um, and I'd like for them to take pride in our county and remain in our county even after they graduate college. I'd like to see them stay here and contribute. Um, that's, you know, putting a, for our youth, I think that's a, a big deal for them to have stuff to do here. And, uh, self-sustaining, more self-sustaining things in our county. So we don't have to travel as often out of the county.
Okay, thank you. You, you had enough time to talk, you know? I picked on Martin first and he already gave me his answer. Back to you.
I'm, I'm like the rest of them. You know, I, I've got a sixteen and a seventeen-year-old that, you know, I'd like to see him go to college and come back, but, but, you know, a lot, the job opportunities in this county are very limited. And things for the younger people to do, you know? If they do anything on the weekend, they have to leave, you know, or you have to take them. But it's so hard, cause we are a small county, for these places to survive, you know? Because they're not getting all the people that, that they need to run their business, you know?
Okay. Beverly?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Beverly Fee. I work here at PRTC. Um, and I believe in our small-town community. And I would like to see a lot of our vacant building structures occupied.
It's one of the things I travel all over the, well, the US and Canada and Australia and Portugal. We've even been to talk about filling empty buildings. It's possible. It is possible. So in my presentation, I think next week, it might be the week after, um, I'll share some ideas about filling empty buildings as well. Um, a lot of it depends on the state of the building, of course. Um, I have to do a little research to see what some of your ordinances are now that I know there's no code for it. There are some ordinance for it, so I'm gonna wanna look at that. Incubator projects is one idea for local empty building owners. We talked to Bill. That was his name, right? Bill?
Yeah, Bill Smith.
Yeah, we talked to Bill who had a big fire in his building. Um, and he's working with the insurance companies to, to repair it. But that's gonna be fixed up and open. Did you all know that?
I'm glad to hear it.
See-
That's what the newspaper was before we had the movie.
Well, and, yeah, so, I mean, it's the sharing stories of what's happening. We're not very good at keeping people up to date on what's going on, you know? He's frustrating.
That's my grandparents' general store for about fifty years.
I think he said that, yep. Um, so, I mean, you know, he's working with the insurance companies. That sucks. It's got two of them fighting against each other, but he's all for, for getting it all rehabbed and fixed up. So, um, reach out to the people you do know. We say it all the time. I talked about driving by and not, not even seeing it, but you say, or you do see it and you go, I need to talk to that guy, cause that's wrong. And then you go to work and you forget about it. But you think you've talked to him. These are your neighbors, most of them. Reach out and say, hey, let's go have a beer. I got some questions for you.
Downtown Beaville-
Or I'll bring a beer over or coffee or whatever.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but downtown Beaville did a project a few years ago. Keith will probably remember. They had a, a, a big open area downtown. And they did like a little contest, like tell us about your business or, I can't remember what the, the qualifications were. But then, um, whoever won would get like free rent or in utilities, like we volunteered.
Free rent for a year, I think, yeah.
And that way to get a business downtown in that building that was just sitting there empty. So, I mean, it was just, I thought a really cool idea.
And that county owns that building.
How hard would it be to get that one downtown person like Beaville has? How hard would that be?
Uh, if, that's what, that's our missing piece. And, and I wanna go back kinda what I was talking about. You know, when it's talking about getting everybody together. I'm not talking about every event has to be in McKee. But I'm talking about that one person that's kinda managing and all of what we can say. Well, in Amble, there's a parade at eleven. And then down here at McKee, they're having a pick roast. And then at San Gap, they're having live music there at the Welcome Center. You know, that type of, is why I was talking about getting everybody kinda on the same page. Cause right now what we're doing is we are, you know, we've got Amble pulling this way and we got McKee pulling this way. And San Gap pulling this way, which is all great, but you got to get them all together. And that one director would be important. Talk about Beaville, like I said, I, I represent them. They're unbelievable. They aggravate me every week. Say, hey, come, we're shop, we're doing a shop local week this week. You better get down here and get your picture took. So you know what I do? I drive down there to the bakery and I'll have my cupcakes and I'll get my picture took. And I'll put it on Facebook like our representative come to visit us. I mean, that's things that's simple, but it's pressure from the internet, just like- I mean, that's things that's simple, but it's pressure from the internet, just like, uh, but just like, uh, you know, here's another example. Oh, our old building down here, the Mexican Restaurant. Did you see how many times that was shared before LRLs finally decided to go in there? Like everybody in Jackson County was saying, open restaurant, come to it, I shared it. And then all of a sudden, they got back on there and it said, hey, or Facebook said, we've got a, we've got a suitor, we've got somebody coming in next week. And it was because our community sold this building and said, we really want a restaurant here.
We'd like to eat.
We would like to eat, come, and, and, and I think I talked to Doug, he had like twenty or something people wanting to come. You know, looking, looking at that, looking at that restaurant. Yeah, well, yeah, and, and so, that's the missing piece. We talked about before.
They have a salary down back. They have a director, and they work together and they're making things happen.
So I'm gonna jump on the Tim bandwagon. We, as a tourism group, has been begging for years now to get a paid person. We're growing so fast that volunteers can't handle it anymore. We've got eight regional trails, a ninth one about ready to come in here. And these are groups that are gonna bring in traffic, gonna bring in visitors. But nobody knows they're happening because volunteers can't keep up with all this stuff. So we have this, this one person that could work on all the stuff that's going on, the economic development stuff, the tourism stuff. It would make an incredible difference. And we just can't seem to get that passed through our local governments, whether it be a joint city-county effort. We've presented to both boards multiple times and asked, please do this. And without any results, but if we have that, it'd be phenomenal. The stuff that's actually happening for our kids, that they can know about. It's just, it's happening, we don't, we got a great horse group doing events, we got a great off-road group doing events. And we got the Backroader Bapalasia doing events. So tons of stuff happening in this community, people just don't know about it and volunteers can't handle it anymore. So on a note on top of that, be louder and reach out more whenever you go to city or council, county meetings. Because the more people that show up, the more that gets done. You just said it.
When, when is the next one?
The squeaky wheel gets the grease.
This coming Tuesday. Get the levels in.
But when's the next, when's our next Facebook?
It's the third Thursday at one o'clock.
I think it's the thirteenth. I don't know the exact date. Yeah, I think you're right, the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, one o'clock.
Well, let's do it. Let's do it.
Put that on the calendar.
Mark films it, or we film it, put it on TV.
Thirteenth at one o'clock. Do we have to get on, do we have to get, uh?
On the agenda.
Usually we call the judge ahead of time, call shades, assign the agenda and see what we're talking about.
Let's do it.
Great, thanks.
I just wanna add that our mayor and our county judge are both on vacation in the same town together today, so they're not here. They sent great representatives.
And I'm gonna go back, I'll, I'll fill this out there too. I met with both of them and we are planning a, uh, a community cleanup day. We were gonna do that back in, um, uh, March and the dates just couldn't work out for us. Well, we are gonna do like a, starting off, and then we can do like a McKee Cleanup Day with the mayor and with the judge. Uh, and include everybody, obviously, I, I shoot it, I, I shot a text to some people, but, but once we get that date set, it kinda could go along with kinda some things we've talked about. Get everybody involved and then spreading that and say, all right, we're gonna do McKee this time. Two months from now, we're gonna do San Gap, you know, then we're gonna do Anvil. And just get as many volunteers as we can, bring in the dumpsters, bring in the pickup trucks, Rodney's pickup truck, okay, a good one. But fill them full. And since our county now owns and operates our own garbage, you would think that would have to be an asset to have. It still may cost something, but it shouldn't cost as much if we're hiring somebody from outside to come in, set your garbage trucks up, let's throw them in there, clean it up.
So you're talking, going door-to-door, having a central location, people can drop stuff off that?
Well, we're talking about like originally, just, just like McKee Square right now. Cleaning up everything that are, pressure washing sidewalks, painting builds that need to be painted. Talk to Kathy about cleaning up her area, I'm sure that's what she's talking about, offering the places set up. Uh, the old vacant building down there at the Fort Fairmore Ball, we're gonna clean that place up next to the post office. Those type issues, you know, and just get as many people.
And what if you made available that people can bring their, their old wood and their old, old stuff and drop it off?
Sure.
And just add that there.
Uh, I haven't seen anybody date yet.
Keith's not big enough for that.
But Keith's not big enough for that?
No, McKee's not big enough for all the old stuff we've got.
Take it till it's full, first come, first served, right?
That was a joke, I'm sorry.
I'm not good with jokes, obviously, right?
It was an acumen joke.
There's somebody at the door that might need help? Did Gary equip me? So, don't be sorry, he can come.
Every time we have a meeting in this building, somebody that wants to go to that building comes through by the door.
Jerry, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're with the paper, right?
I'm with the Jackson County Song, Cole Wester.
What do you wanna see in town? You probably hear more stories than the rest of us.
Well, I, I cover the good, the bad, the ugly and the beautiful and have for almost two decades now. The one thing that I will say is that there are some absolutely wonderful people in this community that work really, really hard. For them, I would just reiterate what's been said here, cause this is something that's been preached in these meetings for years. And that's coordination amongst the different groups. And whether it's a director that gets paid to do it, or however, that needs to get satisfied, ultimately, that would help, to provide coordination. The other thing that I, and I don't know how to answer, I don't know the answer to this, but it seems like no matter how hard the newspaper tries to get information out there, no matter how hard PRTC tries to get video of meetings out there, there's a culture that either doesn't engage or purposely of interprets what they're seeing based on cultural biases. And for example, if you work for a newspaper, you're fake news, no matter how hard you try to be truthful. And they discount your story before it's ever out there because it's with a newspaper. If you work for the government, you're corrupt, because there's a distrust of government. No matter how good your heart is, no matter how hard you're working, you're distrusting. And so there's, there's, there's a need to educate people. And the, and the conventional ways to do it have obstacles. And that is through newspaper, through media, through public outreach. I, personally, I think the way you do that is you roll up your sleeves and you get busy and you work and you show them what, you show them how to do it and you show them the results. Because you'll never get around it any other way.
You gotta keep telling the good stories.
You gotta keep telling the good stories. We go out of our, we have to cover all of it. And we go out of our way to try to put as many good stories in the paper as we do bad. At the end of the day, we cover the news. We don't, you know.
Part of the misinterpretation of what's happening, every stereotype has some basis, stereotype has some basis in truth.
That's absolutely right.
That's the problem.
That's true. There's a mugging of truth in there.
There are, you know?
That's right.
Not a lot, but they're, they get a lot of attention too, so.
That's, and they deserve to be held accountable and they deserve to have a lot shined on them, just like, absolutely.
But just like that, the ones that are doing good things deserve to have that light shined on them too.
And organizations like the Jackson County Development Association go out of their way to, I mean, some of the issues that's come up here are, are, are big, big issues. Like for example, uh, the trash on private property. Well, that's a private property rights issue, but then it causes value of adjacent properties, that's public interest. And so you have to find some way to balance private rights and public interest. And you have to do that through positive reinforcement and negative reinforcement. And so we need ideas and suggestions and help. And that, and bringing folks like you in are one of the solutions to that. You know, how can we get, what are policy reinforcements we can implement?
I wanna touch on something, uh, the coordination amongst the groups. You could do, we do this, have done this all the time and I recommend it in almost every community. It's called Coffee and Calendars. Start with your nonprofits, invite them for coffee, um, towards the first of the month. And just pull your calendars out and start sharing what's going on. So that those are the folks that can make the decisions to put the date, or put the time back two hours. When I first started doing it, I, I was, thought we could do it for a whole year at once. We couldn't. We had twenty people around the table, we were lucky to get two months in. But we got two months in. And then you had twenty people thinking similarly. Oh, I didn't know you were doing that. Crap, I'm gonna go to that. We're gonna change our date, you know? So just start with what you have, start with the people that show up. And, and, and it's not, you know, if it's three people, it's three people that are coordinating. It doesn't have to be a huge group. It's nice when it is, but it doesn't have to be. Thank you for putting stuff on, uh, filming and putting stuff on cable? Is that where you have a cable channel?
Yeah, we have a TV cable channel too.
We're now on local.
But we also have YouTube page, YouTube channel, Facebook page, we've been on all of that.
You have a small example here that might work. Okay, you said you're gonna start in McKee, and you're gonna go to Anvil, go to San Gap. Why don't somebody from each one of these communities find somebody that is conducive to come into their place and have it cleaned up? It would be, it would be more than happy to have that. So then we've got three people. Then we go and we, we video the first part and then we video the beautiful part.
You know three people already, don't you?
And then we promote that part. I'm sure we can find three people that have.
Jody, this is Judy, you're Jody. You're sitting to class.
I don't know three people.
Danielle's running away and you knew I was gonna pick on you. I'm gonna interrupt you, cause I only, you got two people to go, yeah? And your name, young man?
Sure, it's Josh Montgomery. I'm an IT specialist at PRTC. I'm also owner of an Airbnb cabin rental, which I feel like it's turned out to be very successful, almost, uh, been doing it for two years now.
Where's it at?
It's in Greyhawk.
Okay, what do you want?
Sure. So, you know, just being somebody that's lived in this community all my life and then also being a, a business owner in, in that manner, you know, there's a lot of needs that I see that this community could have. And, and there's a lot of resources that we do have here. And you know, I know tourism is trying to do things to bring people in and to get people here to, to share some of the things that we have, that we can share with people. But to me, one of the things that we could be missing a little bit, or need to have focus on too, is once you get people here, it's like, well then what do they have to do, or what do we have to support them? So to me, need to have some focus on these essential, um, things that we're losing or maybe have never had, but most of that, of course, would be restaurants to eat at. Having places for people to, we try to have a binder that we recommend, you know, places that they can go in the county and in, in the surrounding counties. Um, but you know, it's a fairly short list as far as what they can do in the county too, if you need something to eat while you're here. You know, this is where we recommend that you go.
So I wanna interrupt.
Yeah.
Um, most church groups do meals for fundraisers. Those need to be included in when you share what's going on.
Yeah.
So if on Sunday afternoon, the Methodist, once a month, feed the community for ten dollars or do turkey dinner at Thanksgiving time, outsiders wanna go to that stuff.
Yeah.
And they wanna give more than ten dollars.
Yeah, and if there's, if there's flyers that we find online or something that's put in the newspaper, we'll usually take those to our Airbnb rental and, and put those on the, you know, counter for them to see. Um, of course, every year when they're, when we do the homecoming and the fair, we always take those and we, we, and we usually send a message as well, like, hey, this is going on in the, in the community this, while you're in this weekend.
And this is where a paid tourism position will make a difference, cause they'll know to look for that.
Right, and if there could be things that are, you know, more flyers made with all those things broken down, then that could be a one good resource that somebody could just look at and say, okay, well, I know everything that's going on. Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so we got restaurants, what else?
Yeah, the, the other thing is, you know, of course, more shops is, is good, cause we, we've recommended people to go over to the boutique in Anvil and shop and, and they, cause they, they've asked us recommendations, we said, oh, we'll go here if you want. It's like, where can we shop local? Where can we go see something unique? Right? And so we've recommended those and, and it's always been a good response that they've given us back. But the other essential thing is grocery stores. And so we've got one grocery store, kind of, I mean, as far as a bigger grocery store in Save-A-Lot. We lost IGA years ago, nothing's ever come back into that building to offer more. And, and Save-A-Lot is good, it's a good option to have, but there's certain things that Save-A-Lot doesn't have. If you go there looking for something very specific, they may have it, they may not. Um, we've got now the, the DG Market in Anvil, which helps give another option in that part of the county, as well as some convenience stores that have some good options. But having a, a grocery store with more, you know, variety, you know, has been a missing piece. And so we've had people that's come to stay with us that ask, well, do we need to buy groceries before we get there? Or is there somewhere to shop? And, and usually we have to say, no, it would be better for you to stop in a county before you get here to get your groceries. Just because we don't know if whatever they're looking for, they're gonna be able to find in this county. So.
Okay.
I think you gotta build those essential kind of needs, uh, and have those provided before you can really push tourism. You know, cause once you get people here, you, you wanna be able to provide those basic needs that they, that they're gonna have when they're here, if they're staying, you know? Because I feel like as far as the Airbnb rentals and, and the rental properties, I feel like that is, that there's a lot in the county now.
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, so it seems like there's places for them to stay, you know, if we can get them here. They got fast, you know, we got fast internet broadband, we've got places for them to stay. We just gotta focus on these other things as well, before you can really build on, okay, all these events that we're putting on and once you get people here, that they don't have to go out of county to, um, to get, get some of the basics.
Do you have somebody that teaches how to make simple landing pages for websites?
Yes.
That's just what I need to hear.
Yes, I can do a referral, yes, absolutely.
Can I have one comment, a question?
No. You can, but I need to get Danielle. Let me get, cause you're the.
Don't forget the man down in the corner.
Could I add two more things?
I've talked to him a lot.
Oh, have you already?
You know I'm not ignoring you.
I will share some comments and share some of those things.
All right, let me, let me get Danielle.
We'll make sure he won't let.
We'll talk.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. It is Danielle, right? Okay. And what do you do?
Um, I work for the city of McKee, also here, cause my boss is on vacation.
So what do you do for the city of McKee?
Um, my official job title is administrative clerk, but there's only two of us that work there, so.
So you do everything, I got it.
Pick a task.
What would you like to see?
Um, I, I, I've been thinking about it this whole time, I sort of have to echo what Josh said. It, not just visitors' reasons to stay, but the general population. People need reasons to stay here, like to stay for the weekend instead of going out, to stay long-term. I actually left and came back. So I mean, people need reasons to stay.
Yeah, if it's a nice place to live, it's a nice place to visit. And vice versa, if it's a nice place to visit, it's a nice place to live.
Yeah, Toner Elementary is STO, STLP project. Their motto was, Jackson County, come for a visit, stay for a lifetime. That was cool.
Anything else? Okay, now you can interject.
Just one quick question. And Josh had talked about, he's a business owner at Airbnb for two years. You have brochure in your Airbnb. Who created that brochure?
We did.
Okay, so going back to.
Chelsea.
You started T I.
Exactly, well, not everyone's a Josh, even though.
I give my wife the credit on that one.
I was gonna say, Chelsea probably had a lot to do with it. There's a new Airbnb in Anvil, uh, through our local ministry, Grace County Ministries. Not a lot of, uh, expertise on brochure development. Can we have a copy of yours, what you, uh, leave in your Airbnb? It's about Jackson County information, correct?
Right, so I mean, what we did, and, and we've stayed in Airbnbs before too, in different places. And we always liked having those, you know, booklets. They basically had area recommendations, things where to go to eat, where to go to do, you know, local stuff. So we kinda developed that, so it's a thick binder of things, being like, okay, you know.
Do you have that online?
No, it's, no.
Can you scan it in and make it a PDF?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And that way you can just email it to us.
Well, we wouldn't wanna reinvent the wheel for Anvil, we just want a copy.
You know, and I'm sure there's things we've missed too, that somebody would say, well, you don't have this on here. That'd be good to add, you know, because it's like.
Even a little reason to share.
You know, you know, because there's gonna be things that we're gonna miss out on, you know, just like Mama You know, you know, because there's going to be things that we're going to miss out on, you know, just like the Mama Deez restaurant up there in, um, Kirby Knob area. You know, people had told us about that, it was like, well, we really need to go eat there before we recommend it. So we went, eh, it's great, put it in there, said, you know, put a star by it, that you're going to want to go try this place out. You know, and try to keep people local, some of these hidden gems, you know, that they made, just off the beaten trail. Um, but can I, can I say a couple more things?
Absolutely.
Just real quick.
And Mark, I, I, Mark Casey, I've got to do Keith too first, so go ahead.
Sure, um, so.
Stop, more lady than I am.
The other, the other side, well, yeah, sure. The other side of that is I'm a father too, and of course, you know, I've got young kids, uh, two young boys and, and it echoes what some of the others have said about having things for them to do here.
Right.
You know, and, because we're, we're going out of the county a lot to go do something on the weekend. Um, just like we go to, we go to Bataville quite often and to the bowling alley over there, you know, Bataville's got a bowling alley and it's actually a pretty good one. And they love doing that and it's like, things I would like to see here that you're able to do, that I know people's talked about drive-in movie theater for many years, like, why can't we have one of those? There's a few still around. Um, and I know it's going to take somebody's investment, it takes somebody's hard work to try and pull something like that off, but it, it really saddens me to hear my, my father and mother talk about when they grew up in this same county and the things that they had available and they had so much more. You know, there was drive-ins, there was places like Four Restaurants and.
Stadium.
Yeah, I mean.
But the, the smaller steps can be taken. You can do movies outside on the wall of the building.
Right.
And, and talk to either your local library or, or, uh, someone that's already got the license to get the movies, to purchase the movies.
Yeah.
Um, because it's like two hundred and fifty bucks if you don't have a license to, to purchase a current movie. It's a lot cheaper to get older movies.
Yeah.
But you can have an event.
Sure.
Do it the first Friday, the second Wednesday, or whatever. Consistently, consistency is really important. And that's a small step that you could do.
Yeah.
That, that you absolutely could do. Judge your interest, see if there's people that want to do it. And if there is, then you build it. Or someone built it. Trust me, people come under the woodwork when they see good ideas working. And it starts with those small ideas. Um, you can build a mini golf course. They did it in a small town in Colorado. They had a mural, beautiful mural, kid with cowboy hat beside the wall in an empty lot. And the town starts with the name Rocky and I can't remember the rest of it right now. But, um, they had a lot of rocks around town, so they built a mini golf course with rocks. So, and it's on your honor. You go put your money in a little locked up box and go play mini golf. It's always busy.
Yeah.
Got to trust people to do stuff too.
Yeah. Another thing I had, I was going to mention on the, the, the trash talk that we had, you know, sitting here. And I, I won't go on for very long with that, but you know, hearing the different things, you know, thinking about, okay, how, how can we best pull this off? But I like what Jody said in, in the fact of trying to volunteer to go to some of these places to clean up for them. You know, but it, it is touchy as far as going to somebody and saying, your place is a mess, it needs to be cleaned up. But to try to help bridge that some and talking about involving the students, you know, I don't know what, you know, whether it be through certain, um, STLP or maybe even some other thing within the school system, but it's going to be a whole lot harder for somebody to tell students and kids, no, you can't come on my property and do this. But if they're approached with this as a school, um, you know, program that we're doing to beautify the road sides and, and different things, you know, then maybe they would be a whole lot more, you know, uh, I, I guess, they, they might not get as mad if, um, and accepting that, okay, this is a school project, you know, the whole county's doing this and, and, and pick, you know, somebody to go through and, and, and target these areas or these properties. And I'm sure you'll get some no's, but then you might get more yeses than, and, and they do the work, right? So the, the students are the ones kind of doing this community service work for these actual properties.
And don't let the word insurance frighten you off, because I know you thought, oh shit, how are we going to, how should, how are we going to do insurance on that? People sponsor those kind of things. That's a good investment for a business to sponsor. So don't let that throw you off. Because I see his brain just bumping up. Oh, what else? Oh my God.
Come on guys.
Keith? I haven't even talked to you yet.
So I'm Keith Cavan, CEO of PRTC. And I, you know, grew up here in McKee, in Jackson County, in Big Yer Hall. So I'm one of the lucky ones, went away to college, came back and, you know, actually found a good place, a job. And then I know, you know, one of my goals, through PRTC and personally, and my involvement in all these, you know, volunteer organizations, and I know a lot of them, is to just, you know, I'm generalizing everything that everybody's set specific. Make our community a better place to live and work, and whatever that may take. And, you know, I, our staff, not just our company, but our staff here volunteers on a lot of organizations, on Christian things on a couple. Judy's on some library board, uh, Mark's on a couple. I mean, we're, Josh is. We, we encourage our staff to be involved in all this as well, but our company, you know, we try to do a lot too. We think, we, we think we're more than, we are a co-op, a nonprofit co-op owned by the people that live here. So we think that part of our job is not just to provide great broadband or TV or telephone, but also to give back to the community, whether it's monetary, whether it's volunteering to work at parks, whether it's sponsoring little league programs or high school baseball, or giving scholarships to high school seniors, or, or I could name twenty more things that we do and I'm just not about to be ragging on PRTC. I'm just trying to make a point that we are invested in our community in more ways than just providing services that people pay for. And, you know, I just grew up, that's part of my DNA. My dad was mayor here for twelve years and he was all about civic organization, getting back to the community. I just grew up with that as part of my DNA and lucky enough to have a job to, you know, that an organization can do that as well, as well as me personally. An organization can do a lot more than I can, but, you know, I see a lot of these people that, you know, I'm probably in ten or fifteen different organizations and happy to be there, because all of them have their little part. And it is a lot of the same people, but they all got a little, little, little different role. And, you know, I'm all about working together and whatever me or this company can do, as long as I'm working for this company, we want to be a part of it.
And, and I, I've known Keith for a long time and seen him in his role before I was here. And he loves his community and he promotes it in DC, wherever he's at, Jackson County. That's an absolute.
He's been to the White House three times.
Yes.
He gives me a dollar every time.
That is true, but I don't leave with that.
Mark Casey, will you come up and introduce yourself, slide up so people can see you? The newcomer to your community.
Uh, yes, yes, hello everyone.
Hello, Mark.
Personally, I apologize for being, uh, late. I had a meeting that kind of ran over it and I anticipated. Uh, but this meeting was very important. Um, I'm glad I was able to arrive in time to hear the, uh.
Please talk louder.
All the good nuts and bolts, I'm very soft spoken. I let my actions speak for me, you know? Um, so there's going to be some things on the ship, then there's going to be some things that I can't share on camera. So, um, that is very important for you guys here. And you'll, it'll make sense after I share. Um, from what I've heard, I'm very excited that I chose this area or that I feel God led me to this area. I'm a very faith-based person. I was a kid that was always in church. I used to beg to get to basketball practice and football practice and I had to go to church to get there, so. I'm the son of a woman who did full twenty years and the father did full twenty years, third generation veteran. I work Homeland Security, um, Veteran Air Force myself. Lived in many different communities, lived in many different countries. Uh, so I've been totally associated with all different type of cultures. So I have a good broad scope on people in general. And that's when I discovered how much I actually love people, uh, really, to their core, good and bad. Because like you stated, there's a lot of people who fell into the cracks of society and weren't able to kind of dig their way up. So I've seen people who were successful in that and I've seen people who weren't, but their kids were, right? Because, um, they're, they didn't want to be the spitting image of the parents. So they were provided opportunities to allow them not to fall into those same cracks. So have a lot to say, and say it quickly. Um, when it comes to why I'm here, um, I'm here to bring a manufacturing plant uh, that's going to be dealing with a medical device that's going to really help a lot of people, uh, tremendously in our country. Um, I chose this area, or like I said, I feel God led me here. I ended up renting the Airbnb from what I discovered, Michael, who was the mayor. Um, didn't know he was the mayor when I selected that Airbnb, so what, that wasn't strategic. Um, the only thing that was strategic, uh, was me choosing McKee, because I knew I needed to travel in about forty, fifty mile radius. Lexington was not on my radar because it doesn't fit the humanitarian aspect of my company. The reason humanitarian aspect is a part of my company is because I'm a part of the private sector. And because of that, we're not focused on the bottom line totally. And it also has to impact the people and their quality of life that's within a certain amount of radius of anything that we touch. Um, so with that being said, uh, I'm here for all the right reasons. Um, I'm going to invest in the community as a whole. It's not going to be just I put up the manufacturing plant, uh, I hire the people, or I won't be doing the hiring. I have the people there that's going to be doing interviews and the hiring and, and then you guys like never see from me again. I was just a guy with the shiny glasses, but we never see him again, right? You know, I'm going to be here. I've already brought my family here, my daughter here. Um, I rented a little quick spot to kind of hold us over, but I'm going to build a home here as well. Uh, so the, now the private sector part, that's where if you can hit pause real quick on the camera.
I know you have a meeting.
I do? Well, Rodney does too.
My email is deb@savior.town. I mean it when I give it out. If you have questions or ideas or want to just shoot the breeze a little bit, do reach out. I want to know what's going on, please keep me updated. I want to, I want a picture of your pickup with that back end. That's it.
Hey, Dave, let me just say this, thank y'all as, as host of this event, thank y'all for coming. We didn't know for sure how many people would come. It's been a great turn and appreciate, we've been our honor to, to host this meeting.
Thank you so much.